Dennis Wayne discussed contract to haul sludge from the wastewater plant.
Currently, right now, we have our own tractor, we have our own honey wagon, and I've been applying the bio solids for the last couple of years. It takes me roughly a week's worth of time, depending on weather, to get it done. With our equipment, it's more than capable, but it, like last year, I, we ran short. We didn't have a, we didn't have that many bio solids to spread. And I didn't cover the whole field, which brings it tough for reporting, makes it tough for the farmer to farm, because now he has to apply additional fertilizers and stuff. If we hired it out, they have a better flow metering process than we have on our equipment. And they can do it in a day, which would take me a week. So, we would save a little bit of money on, on the, on the cost of equipment and time-wise. Spending that, and then that quote is for roughly a hundred twenty-five, or for a hundred twenty-five thousand gallons. So, it would go less if there was less bio solids, or maybe it would go up if there's more.
And this would be applying it in the same place as it now?
Yeah, correct. You have to be in our, our field.
So, is this a commercial office that's doing that? Does that do this here, or is this a private?
This is a, it's a private guy from Elsata Town.
Okay. So, how do our insurers cover that?
Well, basically, they just would pick up the bio solids. They would load it into, from the sludge digester. They would just load it into their tanker, or their trailer, however they spread it. So, once they leave with it, we're done with it, basically. They're just taking it away and hauling it. So, I mean, I don't think we're gonna have liability if, you know, a private contractor spreads, you know, the sludge. I guess we would have to have some kind of a agreement or something with them that would specify how that would work. But it's just like anything else, you know? I mean, we deal with different contracts.
But we're talking with, with, with sludge, which is a, you know...
Yeah, it has to be spread out on approved fields.
Yeah, so...
The same as we spread it.
The paperwork...
That wouldn't change.
The paperwork and the controls, that's all with that type four permit. So, that, the reporting, all that stuff, we'd handle the same as always. I imagine that you'd have insurance if, first day there was a car accident, you know, on the highway. But that'd be no different than, I guess, if I was in a car accident. It's just, it's a better process. And then the end game, what I'm thinking with this is if we contracted this out, that would free up the tractor, the honey wagon, and the back blade. That would free up some money, you get a different piece of equipment for maintaining alley waste. Currently, we use the tractor primarily for hauling sludge, and we've been using it for alley waste. But the blading on that, on the tractor doesn't do a very good job. So, what I would like to do is, if we could proceed with this, sell this, and get a skid loader with a, a few attachments. And it would, almost roughly from my estimates, it should be a wash, almost.
You mean, use a skid loader to, to create the alleys?
Yeah, with a...
With an attachment?
With a land plane in front. We actually rented one this year, and it works wonderful.
It worked out good?
Yes. I was really impressed with it.
But getting back to the, the person that's gonna hire, is this somebody that will do it year after year, or we have to look for a different person every year?
I looked at, it's Alan Bushell.
Okay.
And he hauls, right now, he does Norse Gills.
Okay, good.
He does the city, he's done the city of Bedford.
That's what I was trying to get at.
This is, this is his business. He's a professional. It's not, we're just not just hiring the farmer from across the street. It's a professional.
I thought you were hiring just a farmer, but this guy is in the business to do it.
This is his business, yes.
Okay.
And there's other companies that do it, because they, this would be the same type of company, the operator that would, for instance, like a feedlot, a hog feedlot. They have to have, you know, their sludge, their bio solids, the same as we do. So, it's the same type of company, so they're gonna be around, I mean...
So, we have to first see site to haul it to?
Yes.
Same as we do now?
Same as we do now.
That, that part of it's gonna be the same. It's all gonna be approved.
If we did end up, the other benefit of this would be, if we did end up having to find a new piece of land because of the nutrient load on that field, he'd be more capable of trucking it. Because that would just add nothing but time, because our, our little honey wagon is a two thousand gallon tank. I think his is about eight thousand gallons.
Well, it makes, it makes sense, because that honey wagon, how old is it now? Eventually, that's...
It's a nineteen ninety.
Nineteen ninety, yeah.
The tractor's a ninety, or...
Ninety-one. Tractor's a ninety-one, I think.
Tractor's ninety-one, and then honey wagon's ninety. And I already hope, because we re, we put a lot of parts into it last year, and they're getting hard to find.
It's a money pit.
Labor alone is gonna...
Well, and you talk about liability, I mean, these guys are driving a tractor, spreading bio solids on state highways. I mean, driving a tractor on state highways, that would all be gone.
But, I mean, having a guy that's in the business...
Obviously, he's insured.
He's insured, so...
Yeah.
I was, when I was, thought we were first, we're seeing this, a farmer is doing it. That's where I was getting a little concerned. Okay.
The other thing is, this may not be every year. I've changed the processes at the plant, and we're generating, I don't know if it's, the waste is breaking down better, but, I mean, the way it's going so far this year, we may not even have to spread this year. We'd have the storage capability to go for next year.
Go ahead, make the motion. Do you have this change?
Does it involve legal issues or...
You're gonna, I mean, you're gonna wanna make sure you have a contract.
Oh, we would.
It's a relatively simple contract. It just basically, to make sure they're indemnified and that they agree to insurance if something happens.
We have time to put that together, because, yeah, we're not even, the way it's looking right now, we're not even gonna be hauling the rest of this year, so... Now, as far as selling that equipment goes, there is, you know, Merring has told Wayne probably multiple times that he thinks there's a pretty strong market for that equipment, especially that tractor, because it's a pre-computer tractor, and there's a real high demand, like, all over the world for those things right now. And so, to say that that could fetch fifty or sixty thousand isn't, isn't like pie in the sky. I mean, that, so, there is some, I think there'd be some benefit to moving on that sooner than later, yet, you know, this year. But, I don't know, Wayne, if you have any...
They, they talked about, they would, if we did go with, if we chose to sell it on Merring's auction, they would give us a break, and it'd be at five percent for the fee. I, his, Kevin's estimate was fifty to sixty thousand. I went online and looked at tractorhouse.com for John Deere forty-four fifty-five. And they're anywhere from fifty, fifty thousand to fifty-five thousand. And ours have, ours has a whole lot less hours on it.
I, Tom, I think before you decide, or you decide to do it, talk to either Matt or Kevin. You know, like that door panel, stuff like that, get that replaced, because if you get that thing looking in pristine condition, now get it waxed. Harder to get it waxed and so forth, it's gonna be money.
And that was part of his push to do it. If he would, he would like to sell it, if we proceeded with it, he would like to, if we sold it on, like, the December auction out, out here, there, there, you have ample time to advertise that. We could take nice pictures in the sunlight, go, we'll get it spread out. He's even talked about tractor jockeys from, like, New York and stuff like that. They, people are asking me about the tractor now, that word's held out that we're thinking about it. People are inquiring about it.
I talked about it, that Thursday, Matt, for that, my memory, yeah.
So, I mean, the honey wagon doesn't worth too much. They figured maybe like four thousand bucks, if that. I mean, the problem with that is it's age, and it's, it's small. I mean, it's a tiny wagon compared to today's standards. The, the back blade, it's a six-way black blade, that might fetch a grand or two.
So, Dave, what, if they were gonna, like, proceed with, we, you know, move and then selling that tractor, what do they need to do?
Nothing. I mean, you can sell it however you want to sell it.
And do they need to pass a motion or anything?
I don't think, I mean, if you, if you're moving to sell it now, I mean, passing a motion is the safest thing to do. I would suggest you, you make a motion.
Authorize the sale.
Try to set out to sell and figure out if they want to auction it or go another fashion, but...
Well, I'd say, I'll, I'll make that motion, but I have to talk with Matt to find out when's the best time to sell it, because the, the season is pretty well done. The fall season, farmers already got their tractors for the, but next spring, you know...
I can talk with Kevin and Matt to see if December sale, or wait till their spring sale would be, if, because spring would be better than fall, or if it'd make a difference.
And then go with their recommendations as far as reconditioning that thing to, really looking sharp, because it is a nice, nice tractor.
I'll second that one. And I'll send a motion. I'm gonna hear a second, okay? Al, favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. And Chief Shouander was here, but then got called away.
Yeah, we just need approval to hire Thomas Rapke as a part-time officer. So, you have some information in the... Starting hourly pay would be, would recommend be eighteen dollars an hour. And this would be just part-time, so there's no, you know, benefits, obviously, so...
Forage license.
Oh, yeah.
Everything.
Go ahead, make the motion if we authorize him to go ahead and make that hire.
Second.
Al, favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. Forfeit ending Katz parcel property. Quite familiar with this property.
So, there's a parcel property located at one-ten First Street, at the, west end of First Street. And the city was notified by Goodyear County that it's in forfeiture. It's past the, how would we call it, Dave?
Redemption period.
Redemption period, thank you. It's past that. So, basically, they're giving the city the option to request that the property be conveyed for public use. If the city takes no action within sixty days, the parcel will be, parcel will be auctioned by the county. The property is located adjacent to Riverside Park. At this time, I guess we really haven't identified a public use for the property. The only thing would be, I mean, it's adjacent to the park, but, other than that, I guess I don't have a recommendation to take any action on it at this point, so, it's a buildable lot.
Now, that's, you can't, that's real questionable.
Oh, it is.
Now that the house, I know this property, it used to be...
Oh, yeah, I know, yeah.
And the house that was existing there was right on the property corner, within a matter of five feet or so. That's gone now, so you can't rebuild there. You couldn't ask for a variance, but it's so close that variance would be unreasonable.
So, it's not buildable because of, like, topography and...
Yes, yes. Not really a buildable lot.
Unless we wanna build a street down there.
Well, the street does go down to that.
We don't even haul that far, because the truck gets stuck down there.
Yeah.
I, yeah. I don't wanna revisit that situation at all. If I had, if I had been able to retain the property, probably donate it to the city to add on to the park. But that was then, it's not. And update on status of Small City Development Program.
We have a summary from Cencro. Basically, there's currently fourteen single-family and six commercial applications that are being processed through the program.
Okay. Further on that, Department of Health Drinking Water report.
Yeah, that's just information.
As always, it's a good report.
We're following compliance. That's usually the main thing, I guess.
Yeah. And I have a council work session to review the twenty-nineteen draft budget.
Yeah, we, we need to schedule a work, a date for a work session to meet again, like we do every year, like we do every year with the department heads, and review the budget in anticipation of the September date of setting the maximum levy. I will, I just, I mean, I'm throwing out the week of August twenty-seventh. It could be that week after that also.
Oh, yeah?
The week of August twenty-seventh. It could be either that week or the first week of September, I see the one of those.
I think that would work, I don't happen to have my planner along with me, unfortunately.
One thing I was gonna suggest, or just throw out...
It'd be the same week we'd be doing the fire department interview, right?
Yeah, that's Thursday, that's correct, yeah, Thursday at six o'clock.
I don't think I've got anything other than that for that week.
So... Friday of that week, like, in the later afternoon, I'm just throwing that out there.
Is that your first?
Yeah, all your schedules are per se, but I don't know if most of you, it's not an issue. And I don't know, obviously, I don't know John's schedule, so I'm here, so...
That's later day weekend coming up, you know, if somebody goes.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Monday and Tuesday, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, they're what, out?
No, they're not out. I think we're pretty...
Twenty-ninth, uh, in the evening.
Yeah, the twentieth might be a problem, just because I have a kind of a major dental, periodotic surgical thing that day, or graft or whatever, so that might not be the best date, because I don't know how long that's gonna... I mean, I think I'm supposed to be back at work the next day after that, but I don't know about having some meeting, a meeting that day, so... But probably not a good day. Wednesday is okay.
Uh, not for me, in the evening at least.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have any other city meetings. Thursday, we have that personnel committee, or the fire department interviews at six, so...
Earlier that day, I've got a, I've got a quick appointment at the clinic down here at eight o'clock. But that, in spirit, if we're going to do the budget meeting earlier in the day, how long do we wanna stick around here that day, Fred? I could make, all that week, I prefer though later in the afternoon.
But you said Wednesday's probably not a good...
Right, Wednesday evening.
But what if it was like, you know, four o'clock or something?
Yeah, that's what I said, anytime, preferably late, late afternoon.
Wednesday at four, would that work for, as far as I know from...
Yeah.
Fred? No?
That's okay. You guys can have a look.
Well, it works for you.
Any day but Wednesday.
Any day but Wednesday? Yeah, I'll, I'll go along with that too, that I go at four.
Well, Thursday?
Thursday, yeah.
We have our, but that's at six o'clock. So, if you have it wrapped up in two hours, I would think. If not, we'll just schedule a meeting, another, you know, continue the meeting or schedule another.
I would say, I wonder if started at three-thirty?
Yeah, that's fine too.
About three-thirty Thursday?
Yeah. I don't see any issue with that time.
Richard?
Finally.
I don't know about John.
So, how about the department head? That's why it's at four-thirty, they're all required to be here, or...
Well, we, yeah, we try to, you know, do the best we can.
Three, I thought, are we doing three-thirty or four-thirty? Three-thirty, I thought.
Yeah.
Three-thirty.
They'd probably like that better, because I'm saying...
Under, it's good one.
I, that's, to be honest, I mean, it depends on the individual.
Three-thirty on when?
Uh, let's see, that would be, um, that, we're talking Thursday at three-thirty, the twenty-third. No, I'm sorry, the...
I was gonna say that.
Thirty.
Okay.
Thirty.
And you will reiterate with the emails?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if you wanna do a motion, I don't know.
To call us for a meeting?
Yeah.
Might as well.
Oh, then I'll make that motion for the thirtieth, three-thirty?
Budget, or work session to do, if that's, those twenty-nineteen budget.
Saying you made a motion, I can tell second to send, and call for a vote. Al, favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item G, discuss mayor and council salary increase. Now, in the packet there was charted, from the League of Cities. And I worked from that also. There was a topic on the mayor's listserv recently, so I calculated the answers that were there. And there were a couple of other, uh, salary surveys that I was given. Not every city answered these questions, and I, I picked out those who replied, cities of five hundred to twenty-five hundred, so roughly our range.
There's only one town that's even close to your hayfield, otherwise everything is...
That's the information I had to work with.
Yeah, that, fortunately, that's kind of a lot of, a lot of cities in that League of Cities, they didn't, they didn't, or didn't list this. Uh, and you see, there's two of them that they gave mayor's salary, but they didn't mention council.
But I got these twenty-four responses in our, roughly our range. One of them, the mayor had to note that, had this way since the nineteen eighties. So, they were looking at making a change. Another one, they have voted for an increase, hasn't gone into effect yet. And then down below, I show the averages of these, which in both cases was above what our current is. And I also went to the Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics and pulled up the Consumer Price Index data from two thousand two to, which is when this was set for, Kevin, to twenty-seventeen. And that's something that a lot of, a lot of businesses and governmental agencies use to figure wage and salary increases. And since in the two thousand, from two thousand two to two thousand seventeen, the index went from one seventy-five point nine to two thirty-nine oh five, which is thirty-five point nine percent. And there are show the lineup percentage to our current salaries. It would be thirty-three seventy-five for mayor, twenty-five sixty-five for council members, which is even a little bit above the average of the other cities in those surveys that I had, which in turn is above what we are now. And there's my dog and pony show. I spent hours getting all this together and calculating the averages, and there you got the information to...
Why?
Because this had been a discussion point that's been brought up in council twice now. Once two or three years ago by Richard, and again this year by Doug. And I believe, stated this before, but I'll run it out again. Well, it's been pointed out that, oh, we're not in this to get rich, we're not supposed to be making a ton of money in. Well, thank God we're not making a ton of money. But I also pointed out that every one of us here on council is getting long in the tooth and not getting any younger. And in order to make it more likely for younger people, particularly younger women, to get involved, who are likely to have childcare situations, and anybody who's paid for childcare in the last quite a few years knows it's very expensive. If you're real lucky, you've got a family member that can fill in for you, but you can't always count on that. Um, I believe increasing the salary would make it more attractive for younger people, in particular, younger women, to get involved in all of that. That's something that we need. So, to answer your question, why, that's why.
I'd like, I'd like your scenario, dude, go after the young women with children.
Uh, you know, they've got the biggest stake in what we do here.
I know, but, and I told you before, if you're in this for the money, you don't belong here.
Yes, but on the other hand, I would like to see myself valuing at least as much as I was twelve years ago.
You know what, anybody who doesn't want their salary can certainly donate it to the city or somewhere else.
There's plenty of charities out there.
You know, over the last twelve years and stuff, you gotta say, Mark has made it pretty easy for us. Joe's made it pretty easy for us, so really, you look at some of these towns, you see, these towns are all over the state, nothing around here. So, you picked, you picked the towns that...
No, I picked the towns that I had the data for.
So, why don't we have some, from Monamango, Gooduse, Sabroda, Wisconsin?
They didn't fill the survey out, unfortunately. Yeah, I guess we could call them, and get it, you know, get the numbers from them by calling them or whatever.
Haven't talked to Mark a few years ago. He said, on the opposite hand, that we have made it easy on him, so...
So, we should, so we should...
He has been, he has been in situations where...
It works both, it works both ways.
Yes, exactly.
Keep in mind too, you're not, you raise your salaries, you're, you're actually raising the salaries for, because we have an election coming up, it's for the next round.
Correct.
I understand, you know, likelihoods that many of you will be on the council after January first, but you're not raising the salary for yourselves, you're raising the salary for these positions and whoever is in these positions in January and beyond. So, that's something too to just keep in consideration, and, I mean, somehow...
That's what I looked at, is, is creating a value.
And so, from a process standpoint, what you would do is, if you wanna look further at this, move ahead with it, however you describe it, then you would basically authorize, I guess, the best way I, I can think of it would be to authorize the city attorney then to come back with a draft ordinance that would spell out, or, you know, that, and actually, I guess, you don't even have to have the final number for the ordinance, but you have to pass, amend the ordinance, which was last amended in two thousand two, that covers council and mayor's salary. So, like, tonight, you wouldn't finalize a decision, it wouldn't come until you actually pass the ordinance?
Yeah, I would just suggest if you're gonna pass one, pass it at the next meeting, because then it has to get public. because then it has to get published and of course, it doesn't go into effect until the next regular election or after that. That's coming up, of course, in November, so the sooner you can pass it, the better. I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it beyond September. I mean, if you can't, maybe you could do it in October, I don't think it dates, but if you're gonna do it, you should do it in September.
And would that give you enough time to come up with your ordinance?
Oh, yeah, that, that won't be difficult at all. I mean, in fact.
That's a boilerplate.
It is, yeah, there's nothing to that. You just have to adopt it and get it published and, you know, one thing I would point out too, and this, these charts don't really show it, but I think it's because the columns are too narrow, but the total budget is something that would be a good point of comparison as well. Not necessarily where the city is located in the state, but you know, what percentage of the city's budget are the elected officials making? I think that's maybe one of the best comparisons, comparisons you can make. And I don't see it on these charts, but maybe if that column.
Problem, problem that I discovered is.
You know the same one I was about?
Uh, no, I was looking at the one.
The league.
The league's salary survey, which was in the packet too, I think.
Problem that I discovered in trying to research these numbers, the league does this survey of salaries and benefits. And it's free to those cities that participated in the survey. Canyon has not done so since, was it twenty twelve or thirteen?
Eighty or seventeen.
Apparently, this is one of those things that Pam was doing and it just.
Slipped away.
It just fell away and nobody knew it. So it would cost us six hundred and fifty dollars to get access to this year's information. What I have there is from last year and it's a redacted version, a partial version. I couldn't see putting six hundred and fifty dollars into it.
No. Mark makes a good point, I mean, it's all public information. If, if you wanted to ask other cities what their mayor and their council number.
If you wanted to go directly to them, yeah.
Right to them, yeah, I mean, it takes, you know, it'll take some time, but, you know, Mark, or anyone in the staff could review that directly if the council's curious about other cities nearby or other cities that might be comparable in terms of size and budget that you don't have information of. But, you know, the statutory requirement is that it's reasonable. One way to determine what's reasonable is to compare yourselves with other cities. I mean, that's probably the most beneficial way to determine what's.
And that's exactly what I tried to do here with, with the universe of data that I had to work from. And I think the CPI is an important point also. All of the, uh, regular employees have obviously gotten raises in that time. That makes it, that's a little hard to compare though because your lanes and steps and you don't have someone at the same.
Yes, but they almost always have a cost of living increase besides.
Pardon me?
I said they almost always have a cost of living increase besides, which is generally three percent.
CPI is trying to back. You know, you look at it this way too, there's been members of the council that have given up their hours of full-time work to come and do it. So they should, you know, they, they gave, they got a little bit back, but by creating a little bit more for each member may make somebody think, well, I think I can afford to do it, that would wish to do it, become on, on the council or the mayor. So I think make it, make it a little bit more lucrative. Right now, probably some of us will, you know, benefit for a year or two. If there's new ones that come in, that's fine. So it's laying for the future, sure, it's costing some money, but I think there's a value in it.
Yes, I, I think there are a good number of people in the city who don't even realize that the city council gets paid anything. And that may make a difference into whether they would even consider getting on the city council. I know when I got on the city council, I was surprised when I got my first check because I was doing it for nothing. What, we get paid too? Whoa. So anyway, I think it's, uh, it's an incentive, just as you were saying. Now, many of us do this just for the fun of it, but.
So what you have to decide tonight is if you wanna move ahead with looking at it or not. If you do wanna move ahead, then instruct the city attorney, excuse me, to put together a ordinance, draft ordinance, however you wanna word that. And that's when you decide if you're gonna actually do it or not, is when you decide if you're gonna pass an amendment to that ordinance. So what we would need tonight would be just direction that do you want us to move ahead? You don't have to decide the actual number tonight or, you know, go down that road. You can do it when you figure out, or when the ordinance is being, the amended ordinance is being discussed, that's when you decide how much you wanna amend it basically.
Would it actually be a new, wouldn't actually be a new ordinance?
It's an ordinance, it's not, it's not like it's codified, it doesn't go under your state code.
Well, uh.
It would repeal the old ordinance and it would be.
Not a replacement for the existing ordinance, just an update.
Either or, I mean, it's, it's such a simple, short ordinance that it, yeah.
I suppose that is a cleaner way to do it. Does that have to be a motion?
At this point? You just give direction.
Just an agreement, an agreement that, to go for, for you to investigate. Kinda curious to find out when the, what, when the last actual increase was.
Two thousand two.
From that point backwards, how much was it of an increase? Oh, well, that gets a little bit more difficult to do.
It helps.
We've been city attorney for a long time. We may have, I know we have the O two ordinance in our system. We may have the previous one in our system, if you're curious.
Okay. That'd be valuable information.
So they could.
I mean, just. And also, uh, to Fred's point that only one of the cities on this list were from our immediate area. Pick out some other cities in our vicinity that are in this same size range. Easy enough to call Michael and.
Well, yeah, you have a few, but, you know, there's not a lot of cities in two thousand. I mean, you know, you got Medford, you know, Wamango probably, but you're talking one to two thousand cities and there's a big difference in, just in that little data range really, you know? So it's not, it's really not.